I'll steal you another one.
Okay, we're on.
We're on.
Excuse me, can we come to order, please? I'd like to call the October 29th, 2019 Selectmen's Meeting to Order. Please rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair, the board just came out of a non-public meeting under 91A3D, I believe, if I have that correct. And I would move to keep the contents of that meeting confidential until, in the opinion of the majority of the board, the circumstances no longer apply.
I second the motion.
Thank you. And by the way, confidential, I believe you mean sealed?
Sealed, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Friendly amendment there.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And since you beat me to the punchline, as everybody sat down, I would ask everybody to please stand. In a moment of silence, we lost a firefighter this week from the Newton Fire Department, Michael Giadano. I'd like us all to be in silence for a moment. Thank you. Okay, we're moving along to Budget Review. A, the library. In your budget book, that's under G for Gale Library.
Our budget is an increase of $2,642 from last, from this year. That's our new proposal. It's a 2% increase.
So the increase is basically...
Salaries.
Salaries?
Uh huh.
increasing postage, decreasing...
So if you're, it's a 2% increase, and it's mostly in salaries. Are you giving, is everybody getting a pay raise this year?
We hope to.
Are they already on the matrix?
Yes.
If I'm still learning about.
Yeah, we're, we're in the matrix. Most of our employees, many of our employees are at step one in the matrix. But we got all that information last week from Nancy and put our people in the correct spots.
And that's reflected in this? So by putting the right, that's okay?
Yeah.
So, um, so we, we just recently got done with, with employee review season, I guess you'd say?
Uh huh.
So your employees were part of that, correct?
Yes, they've all been reviewed.
They've all been reviewed and signed off, so that's good. We, I think that's a question, by the way, we should ask everybody as they submit their budget, that we've, we've covered that, that base, because that's going to affect definitely salaries going forward, so...
Yeah, we review our employees every fall, all of them.
Good, good, so... And it looks like maintenance repairs is also going up by just 250. You have some specific, that way?
We anticipate that we may need a new dehumidifier for the basement. There are some stationary windows at the library that the frames are rotting out. They're the small windows, not the big windows, because those were all replaced. So we project we're probably going to have to do that work.
May I ask a question if I'm wrong, but wouldn't that be under Maintenance of Town Buildings?
The windows could be, I guess. I'm not sure what the board allotted for repairs. Remember last year with the custodian and that being changed out? I'm not sure what the board included in that.
Okay, yeah, because some of that might have been ongoing maintenance versus distinct repairs. The computer maintenance doesn't come under our mon, huh?
No.
They do their own?
Yeah, they do their own. In fact, this year, we've already replaced two of our computers, thanks to donations from the friends of the library. Because we're, we have a lot of Windows 7 computers, and the support for that is going away, so we need to upgrade, so we're sort of in process doing that.
We're still just accepting these for review, correct?
Yeah, right. Question, and this has nothing to do with the specific library. It's more of the spreadsheet and stuff. So I'm looking at column B is showing the 2019 budget. Then column C shows what's been expended so far, correct?
Yep.
So column D is showing a negative?
We always get confused when they got brackets around it and when they don't. And we always seem to have an issue with that.
Because column D, what I'm looking at here, that should be a surplus.
Year-to-date should be a plus.
Right, so, so essentially, if you look at salaries, and I grant, granted, in this case, we have more weeks and paychecks to go, but you have a surplus of 23,000 in salaries, which will probably be expended. But again, I just, for clarity, I want, I want to make sure we're all understanding that when we look at that column D in the variance, even though it has bracket, well, parentheses around it, that is still a surplus, and that should not be looked at as a negative. That would be a bad thing. If we had that many negatives in column D, it would mean we're blowing the budget already.
No, it means that's what's left.
Actually, looking at this, the bracket should be on the year-to-date expenses as being negative numbers, and then the year-to-date variance would be a positive number.
Right.
However, do you have any employees that are paid annually?
Annually? No.
Okay.
We have one full-time employee, and everybody else is part-time.
Right. I'm just wondering, you're...
They're paid with the regular ADP system that the whole town uses. You know, you administer it.
Well, no, I was just wondering that with two months to go, you had, you still have almost 25% of your salary line?
Well, this is, is, these are old numbers, because we had to submit this information last week. And I know Kim just sent us another payroll report today, so...
Oh, okay.
The, the numbers are old.
So the, the, these numbers are not as of...
10/23.
Necessarily as of today.
Yeah, they're from last week. I, as far as the operating budget part of it, I anticipate that we'll probably spend all of that. The salary number, I can't guarantee, because I don't know who's going to be sick or what other coverage. We'll, I'm sure we'll spend most of it, but I can't say for sure how much that will be by December 31st.
Okay.
So just as a general process statement, and Larry just alluded to this, I'm going to make a motion here in a second, but the, the motion would be to include this draft in with our other draft budgets as we go along here with the, the idea that all of these roll up into the general proposed draft town budget. So when we kind of accept this, we accept to include this at this point, we can't really, you know, because as you said, this is 10/23. We, when we make kind of our final votes to include this on the warrant, we need to have more real-time numbers.
Yeah.
But I, I don't see anything here that concerns me at this point, so I would move to include the 2020 Gale Library budget in the 2020 Town Draft Budget.
Second. Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Can I just say one thing? After December 31st, I do hand in to Nancy the total year-to-date expenses of the library as of December 31st, and that's what's put in the town report. So by January 1st, there will be a truly updated end-of-the-year report.
Right, right, right.
Okay, and if there's anything left over, that's returned to the general fund?
In the past, it hasn't. Usually, the operating budget, we've spent it all. As far as the salaries, because we've never physically had possession of the money, Town Hall has, in January, the bookkeeper gives us a check for the remainder of that, because we weren't able to spend it, because we never had it.
Okay, so, so it automatically revolve, divolves into the general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
And the training that we went to this year, and I was hoping Lisa would be here to speak on that, the Stephen Blackley told us, and DRA was there, and they said that the leftover monies are supposed to stay in the general fund. They don't go back to the library trustees, just as all of our budgets go to the general fund. Nobody gets to keep any of that. So we've been looking into that a little bit further, just to make sure that we've got our facts straight and...
But see, your departments, you all have had possession of the money. The salary money, we've never had possession of it.
Right, and it's in...
Kim does.
It's in the general fund now. It's just it won't go back to you if there's anything left over, is what they're telling us.
Well, we can have a discussion.
Right, right.
We've contacted some library people up at this state.
There's a motion. And second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I said aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving along to Cable Committee. Ah, yes, we do have somebody here from the Cable Committee.
Yep, that's me. So as you can see, the budget, we lowered it by about five, 200? $500. And the reason we lowered it is we're going to take the fees, the, not the fees, but the subscriptions.
Good night. Good night, thanks.
Good night.
Hi.
Subscriptions for the Dropbox and Adobe software out of the revolving fund, which I believe that's where it should have come from originally. And if you can, if you look at it, you see the salaries that I have there. That's what the new rate of pay, and that's what we estimated that they would be working for hours.
And everybody's reviews have been signed, sealed, and delivered, right?
Exactly.
Well done.
I make a motion to accept the Cable Committee's budget for review purposes for 2020.
Let's, if you don't mind, Larry, Diane has provided us with a handy...
Oh.
Insert cable right there and...
Move to include the 2020 Cable Budget in the 2020 Town Draft Budget.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous?
Aye.
Moving along to Cemetery Trustees. We don't have anybody here for this, however...
It hasn't changed.
It's level funded.
Level funded.
Level funded.
Flags, flags down equals level.
Does anybody have any questions, comments, or a motion?
Just, just seen us, like, if there's any surplus in any of these, they go back into the general.
Yeah.
Okay, no questions.
So there's nobody here to answer them anyway?
Right. Hi, Bill.
Well, they're fair, they're fairly simple. I think we can probably come up with those five areas.
So the grounds, are we going to spend another 5,000 in two months?
No, I suspect, because I just saw people out there mowing recently, that there is a, at least a mowing that still has to come out of that.
Right, so we'll get the final numbers anyway on our final review.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the thing, is we have to get out ahead of these things now, rather than taking a week to do them all when the numbers are clear. But that's why tonight, we have kind of the smaller ones lined up, right? So...
It's not so Larry, the leaves, they have to do all the cleanup in the center, so it'll get spent. They're pretty good about keeping it.
Okay, so I make a motion to move to include the 2020 Cemetery Budget in the 2020 Town Draft Budget.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And next item is EMD.
Which is next?
Conversation.
I have no paper in there.
We don't have a budget for them?
Nope. Conservation empty.
Conversation's empty?
Moving along.
Yeah, should be in there. Emergency Management?
No, Conversation.
Conservation.
No.
Just list is jumping all over the place.
Don't go by that one.
I'm sorry, I'm going by the, my official list.
I'm going by the agenda.
EMD Town.
Yeah, the agenda, that, that all changed around.
They are in alphabetical order on my list.
Okay, we're just going to go with what has papers in them. How's that?
MD.
Look at your agenda. It's on the agenda.
Where's my agenda?
We don't have one, ma'am.
Can we just assume we're going to go in order of what exists? Jim read it off. EMD.
Right. The next one is EMD. It's under Emergency Management.
We'll share it.
If you would like, I'll run out back and copy the agenda.
No, we're good.
We're good. When the budget goes down, we're good.
So do we have anybody to talk about the EMD Budget?
Yeah, so we lowered it 500.
Larry, move your mic down.
You'd like to shout tonight.
Everybody just turned off the mic.
We lowered it 500, because we got rid of the fuel expense line. And the...
Repair line.
The repair line on a car, as we have, we don't have the car anymore. We donated that to the Police Department for animal control. And I'm not sure where the other hundred, the other $100 came from other expenses. So we deducted that, $100. That brings it down to the 500.
So I'm, I'm going to ask this question, and this will be another theme of mine throughout the budgets for the year, just mostly for understanding. You have a telephone budget line of $1,000?
Correct, yes.
Who, so those are cell phones?
Correct.
So who has cell phones? Well, how many have cell phones in EMD?
Two. I have one in Selectmen Doggett.
Okay, so...
That's a lot.
You are also on the Fire Department, right?
Correct.
Do you have a separate phone? You're not carrying two phones, right? So have you ever looked at, you know, kind of canceling one in favor of the other or vice versa?
I don't have one with them.
You don't? Okay, so the Fire is that app, right? Is the, that's how they...
That's just an app, that's not a, right, a phone.
Right, so, so you're not issued a Fire Department phone, nor is anybody over there probably, right?
No, that's all, that's all, though.
The chief is. What the hell's fire?
The chief's the only one, the chief's the only one, right.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because I know we, we did this, I think, towards the end of last summer or something like that, and we're kind of taking, my concern is people who, you know, work a couple hours a week having a town-issued phone when really, we don't, we don't, wouldn't need a, a secretary sitting in an office shouldn't have a, a cellphone when they can pick up a hard line, you know what I mean? So if, if you're telling me it's EMD in the Selectmen, then I can't imagine that's a big deal.
Any further discussion, comment, motion?
I will move to include the 2020 EMD Budget in the 2020 Town Draft Budget.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
And note to the people watching, the budget's lower this year.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous?
Aye.
Next item is Forest Fire.
42.
That's under your Fire Department.
Okay.
Well, it actually comes under the Fire Warden, doesn't it?
But in your book...
Yeah, in the book.
Book, it's under Fire Department, that's all.
This one?
Okay. Is the single page under, yeah, under Fire Department?
Correct.
It's being level funded to the amount of $4,200. And quite honestly, the only, the major variance at the moment is the forest fire payroll, and that is something that...
You never know.
Exactly.
At the end of the year, is that why?
It gets paid at the end of the year, right?
No, I think it's only for trainings or whatever.
We might get that in the fund later.
They don't get stipends or anything like that. It's only when they do trainings.
So they didn't do any training?
Forest fires.
Okay.
So it's been a quiet year, but that...
Thankfully.
I was, I was just going to say, as opposed to California, it's been very quiet around here, but that number could disappear in a weekend.
Let's hope it stays quiet.
Any further comments, questions, motions?
I'm going to move to include the 2020 Forest Fire Budget in the 2020 Town Draft Budget.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous? Item F, General Assistance.
That's under welfare. We're under General Assistance here.
I don't know, I have a tab called General Assistance.
I do, too.
The tab says General Assistance, the spreadsheet says Welfare.
So right at the moment, they're looking at a $227 increase over...
Salary.
2019 budget.
And that was based on the pay increase she received this year, the matrix.
Yep.
Which doesn't take effect till December.
Right.
All right, so the, my eye just caught the fuel, General Assistance.
We didn't use anything last year?
Didn't use any of it.
Wow.
We didn't use any of it in 2019, because usually they are fall expenditures.
So that would be last January, February, March, though?
Right, but quite often, when we get the, the request for fuel assistance, it's October, November, December.
The winter. So that could still be requested.
So what happened last year?
What happened January, February, March?
You, you know what I mean, like, can, can we, and again, this would be, if someone was here, I would expect them to, to kind of give us the example of...
What happened?
Previous year?
As, as you sit here in October, yes, you can't see the reality, however, when we submitted our budget at the end of December or January for the warrant, this is what we actually spent on fuel assistance.
I do remember that in 2018, I remember signing at least three voucher requests for fuel assistance.
What time of year?
Excuse me?
Like, in the winter?
She said what month?
What month did that come in?
They were all prior to, they were all basically at the end of the year.
That makes sense, okay.
October, November, December?
Yeah.
And not everybody qualifies for fuel assistance, so there may be times when they have to come in and ask for assistance from us.
Because I, I do know that our welfare department, the first thing they go to is there's a state program for fuel assistance.
Yep, it's separate, okay.
And if we're lucky, and, you know, the people in town are not in need, I look at that in the welfare budget as sort of along the lines of the, the legal budget in, like, the planning board. You have it there, you pray you never have to use it.
We have a lot of social services that we do get funding for, which Tina will send them to them, those services first, but we never know what we're going to need and what we don't, and you better off to have more. It'll come back to the town at the end of the year. If you don't have it, you're going to have to find it somewhere.
Yeah, my, my concern is, after five years, and it's not just this budget, but I, I always am presented with a, we have to have this in case line items, that always seem to never get used. So it's, it's not just this budget, but I'd like more of an information trail on some of these. We have to have it because, because if it's five years and we've never really used something, it's, it's kind of like, I don't have much success with this argument in my life, but it's the boxes my wife has in the attic. She hasn't looked in the boxes in five years. My thing is, well, you don't need them, we should get rid of the boxes. Of course, she wants to keep them, but...
If welfare was here, it would be helpful.
Yeah.
To ask about, like, how many years have you used it? Is there a regulation where, like, a formula by which you say we must, every town should have this, et cetera?
Because you, you could almost do a study, right? Well, not a study, but you could run some numbers, and you could have the last five years, this is how much we've spent out of that line item. So at the very least, maybe it could come down $1,000 or something like that, so... You know, and it's not, and again, it's not just this budget, it's, we're going to see this in, like Jim just indicated, a legal fund. We're going to see it in a couple of different budgets. They say the same thing about the legal fund. I understand that we pray we don't need it, but it's, I just want to have a little more data to back up why we arrive at the number we have. And it, it also seems to me, if you have a lot of different line items that say we have it in case we need it, then maybe we should have a different approach as to, you know, a bucket of money that we can go into if we need it, but it doesn't impose, you know, a tax burden on the...
Well, these, these two items, in here, it's the fuel and the rent mortgage.
Yeah, I'm looking at the mortgage as well.
That's going to come due.
First of all, rent, rent mortgage, we, and actually in fuel, I believe we have the ability to request that they reimburse. However, if they reimburse, it does not go...
Yeah, it would go back to them.
Back into the counter, it goes into the general fund. Those are two items that I, I look at, and it's a $12,000 insurance policy. Actually, it's a $12,433 insurance policy. Against people in town possibly having to leave Newton, because they can't meet either one of those obligations on a short term. Remember, this is not long-term. These, basically, if you need fuel assistance, you get it once.
Yeah, I think, I totally understand where you're coming from, and that's a good way to put it, it's an insurance policy. I think I just, this year...
And if it's not spent...
Hold on, let me just finish. This year, what I would like to see is more data backing up how we arrive at these numbers, and not just arbitrary. If I put 5,000 in there, I'll probably be okay, because that's what I did last year and the year before, and the year before that. And also, is it, and I'm just throwing them out there by way of an example, is everybody, is everybody in these circumstances taking out of the fuel fund and the mortgage fund? Or is it a possibility to merge them into a insurance policy to use your...
An assistance fund.
An assistance fund, where some, some people may just need the mortgage help, others may need just the fuel help, but...
I, I believe that, that's probably quite true. The other thing that I, I do look at it, neither one of these has gone up in, I don't think during my term in office.
Wow.
So that's the past almost six years. And quite honestly, like certain other things that were brought forward, this is no new money. You know, we're, we're looking at, you know, if you cut these two numbers in half, you would be saving someplace around $4,000.
But every little bit helps. And then at the end of the day, this all rolls into one proposed budget that I'm concerned about getting passed, so...
So what are our options? Review or accept? Because you want to talk to the welfare agent.
Well, I mean, to be fair, what we're doing is we're just, it's a draft, we're rolling the draft into the other drafts, and then, you know, a month, two months from now, whatever it is, we can, we can, you know...
Go back and look at it. And discuss it with the welfare.
But in this, I'm sounding like a broken record from last year and probably the year before. before. Unfortunately, when you, when you're the first night of the budget reviews, it's not your budget that, that we're critiquing as much as the process sometimes. So I think what I, what I'm getting at is what I'd like to see this year is more data around these...
Some of these figures.
These, yes, we haven't spent it because we have it there just in case. Because I've, for five years, I've heard that, and I've never really had solid data to back it up.
And it sounds like for five years, you're not certain whether this has been used on some years or not. We need to find out.
Yeah, Jim seems to have a better memory than I. I don't, I don't know for sure.
Trust me. In the, in the, in the past five years, we have used...
All of it?
Fuel and mortgage.
Mortgage.
No, I, I don't have the exact number. But I do remember that we have had years where, where we have signed quite a number of vouchers.
Okay. So this might be a good figure. We don't know yet.
Well, I think, I think what I'm, what it could be, I think what I'm saying is if, if, and I'm sure everybody's watching right now, but if you're a department head and you're gonna submit a budget and you're gonna have a number like that, that you haven't spent anything against...
You need a note.
And your answer is going to be, I did that because, we have that just in case, I need more. So that's all Larry was gonna say.
We raised this five thousand last year, and we don't use it by December thirty-first. It goes to...
The general fund.
So instead of raising another five thousand, why can't we just encumber this five thousand instead of it going into general funds?
We can most certainly create a revolving, capital reserve, or a capital reserve revolving?
Instead of raising five thousand every year, five years, you're doing twenty-five, we still working on the same five, and then if we need it again?
We can put on next year's ballot, if you'd like, a warrant article to create a welfare revolving account to be funded by, you can take the five and the seven, twelve-thousand dollars from the welfare department.
Does it make sense that way? No, yes?
And that, then that money stays in there. And however, as that money is depleted, you have to have a warrant article to put money back in. Or you can write it so that the, any surplus that was left at the end of the year in the welfare budget goes in. There's all sorts of possible ways.
But so she's still asking for money every year, though?
Yep.
Exactly.
In a different way.
It's a matter of where your surplus goes.
And probably a less successful, or chances are less successful.
You're putting it on the warrant, you're more apt to get a no.
Exactly.
And you're not gonna have the money.
However, if you notice...
I was thinking the same thing, Larry, by the way. But then I realized, when you go on the warrant, it's like, it's, the risk is higher.
Yeah.
But what are the only options? You put, that goes back into the general or, that doesn't require a warrant. Isn't that the only thing that's available?
Those are our only, our only option is to leave it in the budget and...
Right.
Accept it each year or create a warrant article...
To move it.
With the possibility of having it...
Okay.
Defeated.
No, just, I just asked a question. That's fine.
I have, I have a little data for you.
Ooh.
I went back and looked at some of the budgets that you did in two thousand sixteen. And for the welfare, the fuel assistance, you had it at five thousand, and you didn't spend anything in two thousand sixteen. Two thousand seventeen's the same, and I don't think you spent anything in two thousand eighteen.
So that's fifteen grand that went into the general funds.
That's five thousand, right?
That we...
From fuel.
Let's keep it on the side.
Every year, we just keep, so...
Okay, that's, that's the...
Just don't need it.
I'm not against doing that. It's just...
Okay, so we have to review this.
Basically, I, I think we're in agreement that, and again, we're picking on one budget, but we're gonna see this again. We need better, we need a better data or better, you know, formula for figuring out what we need to keep in reserve. I have one question for you. I should know the answer to this. If, let's say, and I'm not saying we're gonna do this, let's say we give welfare zero dollars for fuel assistance based on that they never spent it. And then welfare comes before us in May and basically says, May is probably not a good number. But they come later on during the, the heating season, and they say, we really need three thousand dollars to provide fuel oil to these qualifying residents. Do we have the power as the Board of Selectmen to say, alright, we're going to go into the general fund, pull it out and give you at that point? What are our options?
Leave it in the budget.
I don't know if you have any at that point. I think it has to be a warrant article to take money out of the fund, out of the general fund.
But we can also just lower the amount.
Let me, let me put it to you this way. And this would be, you know, I'm using round numbers. If we put a, if we established in the proposed budget, a reserve fund, we would obviously have, you know, proper accounting, you know, audit-type language around it. It wouldn't just be a slush fund, but we'd have some sort of a reserve fund that the selectmen control that takes all this sort of things, like, like Jim gave the example. You know, maybe it's fifteen thousand dollars, part of the proposed budget, and when and if welfare comes looking for money, we can go there. When and if, you know, library comes for something, whatever it is. So in other words, where rather than having five grand here, five grand here, five grand here, we, or, or more than that, twenty-five thousand, we could have fifteen thousand in a reserve fund.
Now, in order to set up a capital reserve fund, you have to...
I'm not saying it's a capital reserve fund. I'm saying...
That's the only thing that we can legally do.
No, I'm saying we have a budgeted fund...
Oh, like a whole other item?
That the selectmen can only, we can only use for specific reasoning.
And who funds the fund?
I think it could be a contingency fund, but it's gotta be a warrant article like the school did, where they put a million dollars in the contingency or whatever.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't have to, we don't have to create all these budgets as warrant articles. It's one, it's one budgeted warrant article.
Not the budget, but a contingency fund.
I'm talking about a budgeted fund.
Like an item in here.
That's called a slush fund if it's in the budget.
In other words, a line item in the general government line that would say fifteen thousand dollars for general assistance or general...
That rolls over every year?
Well, no, it just, no, it doesn't roll over. It'd just be in your budget.
It'd just be re-proposed.
It wouldn't be assigned a specific function like office supplies or something.
Line item under general government.
I don't know whether or not that would make it through an audit.
Well, no, I think that's, all I'm saying is I believe that is what Matt is trying to get at.
That's what I'm trying to say, and I'm trying to say, whatever it is, if we do this, and it's totally just, I'm throwing, you know, throwing it around, we specifically make sure it's going to pass muster for an audit, DRA, whomever. We're not doing anything crazy. We're doing something that we can budget for use as X, Y, and Z.
Well, that's some, that's something we can look at.
Yeah, we need to learn more. That's a good idea.
Town administrator and ask her to find out some information for us.
Yeah. We have a little time, but...
I'm gonna make a motion to move the welfare budget to include it in the two thousand twenty budget and the two thousand twenty town draft budget.
Okay, is there a second?
Did I just say that right?
Second.
Second.
Because it's gonna be reviewed still. Don't worry. Okay, good.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Next item is the health officer.
I'm confused by this budget.
It's not big.
Am I missing something?
Is this a new budget?
This is the one that the board approved last year, and somehow we mistakenly didn't include it in the bottom line. It was in the spreadsheet we had.
Okay.
Calculations weren't there. So he didn't get a budget last year, and what he was looking for is the extra stuff that he puts in, like many, many, many phone calls or follow-up discussions with the state. But he, he only gets paid fees, and the fees are very minimal. So he's looking to get a little compensation for, like, office supplies, and, you know, if he's gotta buy permits, he's been buying those out of his pocket. It's kind of like the building department. They have their budget to operate their department. He's looking for little funds to operate his department and not have to pay for everything himself.
That sounds reasonable.
And you said that last year, the board approved this?
Last year, the board did approve this, but when we got down to the nitty-gritty, we realized, Kim and I, that it didn't get in the calculations. So we were short twenty-five-hundred, and it was too late at that point to go back. So we're trying again to get the board to approve this for Bob so that he has, you know, office supplies and a little bit of salary that he doesn't get compensated for during the permit process.
Questions, comments?
So wait, was this ever, what was the budget in two thousand eighteen?
He didn't have one.
Same in nineteen?
No. He didn't have one.
Oh.
Which makes it very easy to make your budget every year.
This is new. He was paying for everything out of his own pocket.
And that's not right.
That's an interesting job.
He's based on fees, but the fees aren't that high, and he would pay for stuff. And he's like, I just want a little compensation to pay my phone bill when I'm on the phone with these people for hours on end, going and doing inspections. He doesn't get rewarded for that. He only gets the fee from the permit.
Is this like a matrix amount?
No.
How does that work? I don't know.
It's just a number, a stipend that he's picked out.
Put a stipend.
Okay.
So I would move to include the two thousand twenty health officer budget in the two thousand twenty town draft budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Next item, other general government.
So other general government consists of the insurances, personnel, which would be your health liability, property liability, workers' comp, unemployment, and then also personnel administration, which is your health, dental, and New Hampshire retirement, short-term disability, Medicare.
Are we still waiting for the numbers on that?
Okay, wait a second.
Proposed, yes.
Yeah, I was wondering why it's zero. I was like, that's a savings.
The other is insurance for property liability, Primex, rather. That one's, that one's etched in stone.
Which one's that? On the next page?
But the personnel administration numbers, we're, we're still waiting for.
Yes. Yeah, we won't know those until after all the budgets get approved and we know what the salaries are and that type of thing.
Okay. I was just gonna say, Bill Gates didn't move into town, and that's why it was zero.
But I know normally you vote on these individually, so I don't know if you wanna look at them, see if you have any questions for us.
The pest control was up?
Pest control was up a little bit because we did have to have...
Weston Island.
The pest people go to the transport station because they were having trouble with the rats and whatever.
That's, their truck lease. Nothing looks too out of the ordinary.
Pretty much stayed the same.
There's some of the...
The last three things, fire, rescue, fire truck lease, and the Mirmec Road, those are already etched in stone. Those don't change till they're paid off. So, the legal's one of the ones that you were referring to as far as you don't know what's gonna come forth, but...
God knows.
Well, I mean, there's a big one here, Weston Al virus treatment.
And that comes and goes, but it's...
I, I believe we only sprayed once this year?
Yep.
So it's seventy-nine-hundred dollars per spraying.
Now, does that, what about triple E? Is that under there too? Because those, those are different. I bet that was triple E, because we could spray for that too.
They were all by the same company.
Yeah. So I think, remember, we had the big triple E threat, and we're gonna be getting more of that unfortunately with the way the climate's going.
So we've spent seven, twenty-seven-one already, and we haven't had our boss yet, so we don't know. They're still testing and... And usually, it's twenty-five thousand for the, for the overall dragon mosquito, but then we have ten thousand to cover the spraying. If we have to do the spraying more, more, you know, once or twice a year, because that covers like the elderly parks in the school and the recreation areas.
You know, I, I don't have a problem adding all of this to...
Me neither.
The draft, but obviously, there are so many layers to it. We're definitely gonna have to look back once we have numbers.
Is that the start of the motion?
Yeah, basically. So I would move to include the two thousand twenty general government budget in the two thousand twenty town draft budget.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving along to planning board. As you can see, the planning board number is down eight-hundred-and-ninety dollars. I'll point out an increase to the consultant service master plan line. The planning board this year will be starting to redo the chapters of the master plan.
Good.
They are expected to run between four and six thousand dollars for the expert consulting services to prepare them, with an average number of five thousand dollars.
So people watching, it's long overdue. It's been, what, twelve years? Kind of...
The decrease is in the salary administration line, and that was brought down to a much more accurate number. Anybody has any questions on any other lines in the budget? I know the big one is the legal line, which is four thousand this year. Luckily, we only have, we've only spent so far a hundred-and-thirty-one-seventy-five. However, three years ago, we exceeded that line. There may have been four.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll throw it out there. I'm, I'm sure I'm not gonna get full support on this one, but we can cross the bridge a little later. But I still would like to see a full legal budget for the town that we can all draw from, so, but...
We might be horrified.
I know that Jim has stated before, the planning board feels because they're independent, as we are as well, that they wanna have their own legal line item that they can vote on to, to expend funds from that without having to go to the Board of Selectmen and say, hey, we need a thousand dollars of legal support, so...
Well, simply because the Board of Selectmen could deny the planning board if the...
Well, if it's a legal issue, I don't see how we can deny it.
That's one of the reasons that there is now legal lines in all of these budgets. At one time, the town did have just one legal fund.
And that's what I'm saying.
And the Board of Selectmen refused to pay legal bills. They looked at people and said, find it elsewhere in your budget.
Oh, yeah. I think it's a good idea.
However, as the gentleman beside me should know, legal bills can start adding up really quickly.
Really? I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Is that circuit rider? Is that like a stipend every year?
That is, that is a contracted service.
Yeah, she's great.
So it doesn't make, doesn't, how many meetings they attend or not, right?
Well, it does, however, if we cancel a meeting, the hours that we're, we pay for in the contract get added to the secondary stuff that she does. Right at the moment, there's an application. Larry?
No, that's fine. Then there's also a stipend.
That's in front of us. It's taking a lot of circuit rider hours.
Yeah.
We don't get billed for them.
Okay, so I wanna make a budget motion, move to include the two thousand twenty planning board into the town draft budget.
I second, I second the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Rec. Yeah, let's get them.
Next is recreation.
Sure, they went up.
No, they stayed stable.
How do you find yours so fast?
Special program.
Rec. Okay, here we go.
Recreation is recommending a level budget.
Yep. And I guess to Matt's point, right, you probably wanna find out about... You probably want to find out about special programs or-
Well, I was just gonna say, you know.
What are your repairs on?
That's the beach stuff.
Oh, yeah.
The what?
Like the beach stuff.
Would that include Greenie?
Me and Greenie for that matter. Although we really haven't done anything over there. Greenie, we start, we did, kind of a couple of years ago, we did as much as we could. And as everybody, I think, knows, it's Pandora's box.
Do we get paid for the advertising posters up at Greenie now? Someone's advertising.
That's all Little League, well, NBSA.
Okay. For the plumber, you mean?
Anything that's up there is NBSA.
Now, special programs, budget of 11 and spent roughly half. What's the-
Yeah, so that's definitely coming in under, I believe you're basically looking at Old Home Day, you know, trunk or treat, things like that come in under special programs.
Hopefully, we'll have more.
They'll, probably not. I would say at this time in the year, we're gonna have a 5K and might be something else I'm forgetting.
I meant next year. I'm gonna step more.
Hold on, I always get a text. Not everything has come through yet.
Hi Vanessa.
Okay.
That is the chairman of the rec commission.
I was gonna go to sleep.
I know.
Weren't those-
Keep up the good work, Vanessa.
Well, originally, Old Home Day was a Warren article just to establish it, to see if people wanted it. Since then, it's been in the budget.
Okay, no, that's cool.
Okay, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here you go, Kate.
Can I try it?
Sure, go ahead, go for it.
Where does the sand come from out of here?
So I believe that was encumbered. So that would have been last year.
Did I miss sand in here?
But we got a refund for the sand because we never got the sand.
Yeah, so.
Can't be encumbered again, so.
So for the beach? Repaid for the sand but never got it?
We didn't have it delivered. We weren't ready, so we got a refund for it.
Oh, okay.
It got too late in the season.
Okay.
Okay.
Sand was reimbursed.
But is it sand?
As Nancy just said, but I do believe, and, you know, our callers at home will verify this for me. I do believe that was an encumbrance originally.
Yep.
So because we, uh-
So that was last year's encumbrance. That goes away. You don't have that. So do you budget more money for next year?
It's probably going to, they're gonna try it again.
Can't you encumber it again?
No, you can't. You can only encumber it one time.
So you mean this doesn't include sand?
Right, but it could be reencumbered.
Well, the law must have changed.
Only once. You can't encumber it twice. Oh, you mean out of this budget?
Exactly.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Right, so you encumbered it into this budget.
But only if you have a contract. You have to have, uh-
Yeah, which we did last time.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So, yeah.
All right. Just asking.
So I'd like to move to include the 2020 recreation budget into the 2020 town draft budget. Do I have?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Item last on the budgets, and that is the ZBA or Board of Appeals.
There we go.
They are looking at a zero, um, 5,174.
Wow.
Wow, they didn't use anything.
Right, they are looking at zero variance in the budget.
Is a lot of this money gonna be used?
They only spent 1,200.
Yeah, they didn't spend a lot.
They frequently give money back. And they're, they're an example of also, you know, with the legal funds and things like that.
They spend some though.
You know, they're, they, you know, they could go years without using the legal fund, but other years it gets drawn upon. I think this was one of those.
Well, they used 3,900. So they only got-
They used a third of their legal fund.
1,200, yeah.
And I believe the year prior to that, they used actually a bit more.
Yeah, there was, again, you know, five years. I think there's been two or three where they were at zero, but recently it's been used more.
Okay, so I want to move to include the 2020 Board of Appeals as the ZBA budget into 2020 town draft budget.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Only 158 more budgets to go.
Wow. No, that's just for the budgets.
Yeah, he said 158, but that's a joke.
Uh, no, however-
Change up in a mixed meeting. Yes, right.
Please remember that on November 5th, we will be doing the building department, election registrations and vital statistics. Emergency, emergency management comes off of that list.
Don't go by that list because we, we kind of tried to get as much as we could in on this week. So that was just a rough estimate for where-
Okay, so things, things will change.
And I think we did talk about, and I think the schedule is reflective of that, is those larger budgets were pushing towards the end because they're more, yeah.
That's why you did all these small ones today.
What happened here?
Okay, item B. We have a permit request from Troop 91 to collect food for the Newton Food Pantry.
There is a change on that. They asked me today if to include Sunday as well.
Where they collecting?
Food.
No, where?
With Newton.
So why do they need a permit? That's what I'm getting at.
Are there peddlers?
They need a peddler's permit.
Is this the one that we hang out at the mailbox and they come by and collect it?
Yeah. They, they put a placard out to tell you that they're coming by on November 9th.
I just didn't know they needed a permit for that.
They, they do.
That way the people know who they-
Actually, it's a permit to peddle solicit goods, wears merchandise. It's actually-
Oh, snow.
So I'll make a motion-
Issued by the police department.
I'll make a motion to allow a permit request for Troop 91 to collect food for Newton Food Pantry.
So you're gonna, you're gonna move to have the chairperson sign the permit?
Correct.
I thought so.
And have the chairperson sign the permit.
Actually, in this case, vice chair.
Yeah, the acting chair.
I'll second that motion.
Vice chair.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, I'd like to announce that hazardous waste day is November 2nd, 2019. From 9:00 AM till noon. Get there early and off.
Get on other business.
That's, I'm ripping it in half so you guys can-
I've got one that's not on there.
Okay, do you want to make an announcement?
So our plan currently is to host a Veterans Day pancake breakfast on Veterans Day, November 11th. Breakfast would start at 10:00. At 11:11, we would have a ceremony to honor our veterans. We, a lot of people have put a lot of work into planning this. We have sent out invitations to all the veterans. We had contact information for. We've put it on social media, on the website, Carriage Town and that sort of thing. You do need a ticket to attend. Even though if you're a veteran, it's free. You do need a ticket because we need to get a head count. If you wanted to bring a plus one, we would then charge you $2 for the plus one's ticket if they're not a veteran. So where I'm coming on this one is, please, if you intend to go, please come by town hall. What are we doing, eight and four?
So during normal business hours.
Normal business hours. So Thursday nights are late night. To come and get your tickets because we need to make a go-no-go decision on November 7th. And we would hate to have it be a no-go decision. So if we don't have the interest, we would not be able to hold this event. And we, because at this point, we haven't sold many tickets at all.
We have about six people.
So we have six, which is better than yesterday.
Which was two, yeah.
So it's going up every day. I know sometimes people wait on things. What I'm saying is, please don't wait. Get your tickets as soon as possible because we'd really like to hold this event to recognize our veterans. So that's it for that one.
They can't get them digitally, right?
No, not yet. Maybe next year.
Next year would be good because I know sometimes it's hard. And if they come, Senator Tom Sherman will be there to help you with your pancakes, as will Matt and us.
Excellent.
Yeah, you can come and have the food served by the selectmen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, can we have a motion on the minutes of October 15th?
I would move to approve the non-public and public minutes of October 15th, 2019.
Second.
Thank you. Anybody note any errors or omissions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did we decide we're gonna announce this?
I don't think so.
Was Halloween a joke?
I think it's still too, uh-
I need the board's approval, although we're not supposed to announce the number until it's certified, so.
What, this?
Yep.
I don't see the number though.
It's, it's down the bottom.
I see 18 and 19.
I wouldn't-
Yeah, 19 is the-
The 19 number, the bottom number.
So why would we, uh-
Yeah?
Why would we-
There we go.
Need to do anything tonight? Can it wait?
I can't send it to DRA unless you vote to let me send it to DRA.
Right, but we're, we're waiting for a certified number, right?
Well, they can't certify it till we send this up to them.
Oh my God, it's like, ooh.
Right. We now calculated ourselves, we send it to DRA to certify that we're correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So then we should say yes to this.
They have to review it.
2019, because that's this year's tax rate.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
They have to certify it and sometimes that can take a day. It can take three days. So the girls were hoping if we can get it certified right away, they'll be able to print.
I, I will move to adopt the tax rate as presented this evening by Town Administrator Wrigley.
And sending the DRA certification.
I'll second.
For sending to the DRA for certification.
Yep, thank you.
So it goes there? They have to certify it and then it comes back?
They just double check the numbers and make sure there's no mistakes done on, on the state's part. Because they send me these reports based on our numbers.
And we're still gonna discuss this number to see if we're gonna off balance it or anything? No?
No, at this point, I think everybody's in agreement. Our, our town portion is down.
Is down.
So.
Did you hear that? Our town portion is down.
Yeah, what, what we could control has gone down.
Down, that's-
So this will, once it's certified, it'll be on our website for everybody to take a look at.
Right.
So you seconded. We just need, right, discussion?
Matt seconded. No, somebody seconded. Seconded, I was thinking.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Is there a trick or treat thing or is that a joke?
Kate asked if there was a trick or treat thing. No?
Am I being j- joking? Okay, maybe I was being-
Well, we could talk about it. I, I think I know, uh-
I didn't start it. I just heard, heard it was gonna be discussed.
So trick or treat from here to eternity, I think that was a Frank Sinatra movie, is October 31st every year from 5 to 8. So one would assume if you do it every year same time, eventually you're gonna have years where weather is a factor. I believe my, it was like my second year in town, we had the snowstorm. So we moved it for that one because it wouldn't have been safe in the snowstorm. The plows are out. That would have been ridiculous to have it. But Thursday night, right now, what we're looking at is we're looking at rain and wind during the time of trick or treat. The temperature is gonna be pretty high though, which is funny. It's gonna be like 60 something degrees.
We've got 65%.
So.
Per seep.
Me personally, I think it would be irresponsible for us to not discuss it. And when I say discuss it is, do we just chalk it up to, you know, every now and then you're gonna have a year like this where you're gonna have to use umbrellas or you're gonna have to put on raincoats and you're gonna have to use cars? Or do we want to consider moving it for just this year?
I like moving Christmas.
Somebody said that earlier in the office.
Why we move Christmas to July 4th?
Well, I noticed several, several times I've moved it to Saturday.
Wait, we can't make anyone comply legally with this, right?